Good evening. Uh, today is October the fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. I want to thank you guys for being here today. Today's a special day for us, and we just want to say thank you for being here today. Our thought for today is be kind for everyone you meet is fighting a harder battle. That's plateau. Um, I want to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. Tonight, we're gonna have our invocation by a good friend of mine. Pastor Setit, if you will, of the Emanuel Church. Uh, sir, if you will, please come up and uh, bless us with your presence tonight. Uh, he didn't know he was gonna be doing this tonight, and uh, he gave me a scripture. Before I left, he said, "Be ye ready." So, sir, I thank you for being here tonight. If you would, uh, please just um, make a few comments and pray for our community, please.
Thank you, for the chairman. We honor all of the leaders of Newton County, this Covington area. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your blessings on this day. We, we thank you, oh God, for land and a country that we can be free, where we can elect those that will serve with integrity, with dignity, that will have a heart to serve your people. Now, oh God, we pray that board leaders and sheriff and fire chief, father, all those senior leaders, we pray for them, oh God, that you would keep them safe, that you would give them wisdom and guidance. We pray and we thank you. In your son's name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor. Greatly appreciate it. Um, next, we will have our pledge of allegiance. Uh, we're gonna ask Commissioner Mason, if he would lead us tonight. Next on the agenda is our agenda adoption. If you would, please flip over to item nineteen. It's appointments to CID. If you would add the names, Ms. Annie Jacobs. I mean, I'm sorry, Jacoby. Yeah, Annie Jacoby, I'm sorry. And uh, Mr. Greg Harry. It's Ms. Annie Jacoby and Mr. Greg Harry. Missions, I think that's everything. I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? Pass is five to zero, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is item number uh, five, is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity where we allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. Uh, agenda topic only. You may come at this time. Agenda topics only. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Where should I say?
Right here, sir.
My name is Michael Joffroy. My address is twenty-one, twenty-one Floyd Street, Covington, Georgia. Uh, the agenda topic that I would like to address is here number twenty-one, I believe, and it is the zoning issue. The representative for the landowners is Mr. Bobby Gilstrap, who is here to address. Um, and they are the landlord. I am the volunteer chair for the Boys and Girls Club here in Newton County, and um, you all will be considering the zoning for the building that we're in. I wanted to come briefly and just let you know that we are in favor of this zoning change, and to let you know, we've been working hard, as I know y'all do, to help serve Newton County. We're a volunteer organization. We don't have any public funding. We're all run on private funding, and we have a wonderful center going. We were able to serve uh, over a hundred youth this summer in our summer program, and we continue to serve uh, in an after-school program we have right now with oversight from the Boys and Girls Club. We have a number of our parents and volunteers. If everybody, everybody will raise your hand, uh, that are here to help support us, and uh, we just want to uh, tell you, thank you already for the support we've gotten from Newton County, and to let you know that we are in favor of this, and we appreciate y'all considering it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, thank you. My name is Dr. Eric Setith, and I'm the president of the New Work Foundation, and we are the owners of the property that the Boys and, the Boys and Girls Club are currently housed in. And we are in certainly support of the Boys and Girls Club. They have invested much uh, in that property, and boys and girls are being served in the community, and we just praise, we're just thankful that the resources are there to care for, to care for children. So, as the president and the owner, five oh one C three of the foundation, Dr. Bobby Gilstrap is, is our director. He's present with us, so we are in support of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you so much, that portion of our citizens' comments. So, close. Next, we have um, the chairman's report. I am excited tonight. We have some special people with us tonight that I want to take an opportunity to recognize. First, I think I guess I need to let you guys know that we, we started an initiative, the One Newton Initiative, and what that means is we try, we try to partner and build relationships throughout our community, and we, we try to make our community one family, and that's how we try to operate, and that's part of our strategic plan, and we, we so, we are so excited about that. And um, I have a few people here tonight that I would like to recognize. And what we have tonight, we have a chairman's medal of honor, and it's only, only two people have received it so far, and tonight, we have four people that we want to give this award to tonight. They have did so much in our community. The first couple that, there we go. Mr. Jerry and uh, well, let me say hi to Mama and Dr. Hay. Guys, if you, guys, if you would, please come up tonight.
Um, I am so excited to be able to do this. Thank you. Y'all have did so much for this community. It's amazing. Mama Hay used to be my teacher, and let me tell you, she used to kiss me all the time, and I used to be getting in trouble in class. She used to kiss me on my cheek and tell me, "You gonna be somebody." I'd go right back to my seat and get in trouble again, but I love you so much. They, so many awards, it's just so many accomplishments that they have. If I started reading all of them, we'll be here all night long. But let me just tell you, Teacher of the Year, Kiwanis members. They're gonna be, soon to be in the Educators Hall of Fame. Is that correct? Already is, okay. Already is in Educator Hall of Fame. Guys, listen, I am so, so thankful um, for y'all, for what you do in this community and, and important role that you, you played in my life. So, I just want to say thank you, and thank you, sir, for all the hard work that you have done in this community, helping kids, helping young men, and, and I just say thank you.
Thank you so much. Can we get a picture? Can we get a picture?
I'm gonna ask the board of commissioners, if they would please come around with us. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Uh, we have one more couple that we want to recognize tonight. That's Mr. TK and Louise Adams. Guys, if y'all would come up. They have also so, so, so many accomplishments that, that you guys have, have, have earned, and, and so many wonderful things that you have did in our, in this community to help make this community one, and I'm so grateful for that. Now, Mama Adams, uh, she taught my mom in, in school, and Dr. Adams, he taught me band in school, and nobody believed that I can play the saxophone. I told him I can play the saxophone. But guys, honestly, I am so appreciative to you guys. They are also um, um, they're also in the Hall of Fame. They also are Kiwana members. They also, I mean, they just got so many accomplishments. It's amazing to me how, how a family, two families, that can do so much for a community. The Aldrich and the Adams, A and A. Man, I tell you what, if we can, if we can, um, if, yeah, yeah. If we can model our life after these four people, our community will be a much, much better place. And I'm so thankful for you guys. I love you as well, and I have something for you guys as well. Yeah, so let me, let me say this. Out of, and with both couples, there's approximately a hundred and thirty-two years of teaching and educating kids in our community. That's amazing. That's amazing. I challenge you to go look any other place in our region. I don't know if you'll find that kind of commitment, but I want to say thank you to both of you guys. Thank you so much. Y'all give 'em a hand, please.
So, we want to say, again, we want to say thank you. We know sometime we hold our meetings pretty long, so if you guys feel like you need to, to leave, you'd be more than, be more than welcome to. But again, we just want to say thank you so much for all that you do in our community. Next is the county manager report, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, guys, hold, hold on before you go. We've got one more special presentation tonight, and I don't think you, you guys want to miss it. So, so give us about five minutes, Mr. Kerr.
All right, thank you. Uh, just the first, next slide, please. This is our report for the new hires versus separations for the month. We are gaining some ground, and uh, so we are, we have, in the past several months, we've been hiring almost as many as people have been separating. So, we are getting ahead of the game now. Um, next slide is the permits report for the total permits for the month. Next slide, please. We're still keeping pace with last year in terms of residential permits that have been uh, applied for and have been processed. Total work reports by district, you'll see there ninety-six, District one, two, sixty-one, three, thirty-five, thirty-seven, and eighty-two. All of the L-Meg roads were completed in September. We are now resurfacing, um, working on resurfacing roads and that are coming, and the funds for this, these projects are coming out of our SPOSS funds and out of the regular public works budget. Greenfield Commons, as you can see, Fairview Chase, Sewell Road, Stevenson Road, and so forth. Couple of other major projects that we've been working on are the shoulders on Henderson Mill and the pipe replacement at uh, the reserves at Bear Creek. Next slide, please. We have, uh, the press release was sent out um, a couple of days ago. We have been awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association, and this was for our FY eighteen CAFR, which is a comprehensive annual financial report. This is the first time in many, many years that we have received this distinction, and this is an organization that has members all across the United States as well as Canada. So, what I'd like to do is just have the several members of our finance department are here tonight, so I'd like for you to stand and just be recognized. Brittany White, if you just raise your hand, is our acting director currently for finance. Beth Edwards is uh, one, is one of the accountants on staff, and Kathy Davis is our grants coordinator. Those are just a few of the many people that made this award happen. So, thank you very much for your hard work and, and continue the good stuff. So, thank you. Next, we have some pictures from our community implementation report out meeting. This was our first uh, report out meeting. We intend on having two of these annually. Uh, this occurred last night, uh, October the fourteenth. It was at Turner Lake Park from six until eight, and we had a great turnout. We had over seventy-five people there, um, and this was an opportunity for everybody to talk a little bit with the strategy plan champions, and to um, find out what was going on, to find out what some of the, um, what the achievements that we've done, that we have achieved, things that we have completed over the last several months, uh, which is the, the first six months of our, of our actual plan. So, we appreciated all of the folks who came and spent a little time with us. Uh, we had food and refreshment, and um, I hope that it was an enjoyable experience for all. We're looking forward to doing this, and this is just one of the many things that we're doing to try to continue to engage the public, and you'll be seeing a lot of these types of meetings over the coming years. So, um, this was just a start, and again, thank you very much for your participation and encourage you to, to come to ones in the future, and um, we're very glad to hear from you. We can only improve if we get input, so, and we want to do that as best as we can. So, that, uh, so that concludes the manager's report.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Lord, I was um, listening to your report, and I seen where you was, you gave us a list of uh, for L-Meg, a road that was funded by L-Meg, and, and um, the reason why I would mention that, I noticed that, that there wasn't any um, roads in District Four that was um, that was being researched, paved, or patched, and I understand that um, a part of District, most of District consists within the city of Covington and the town of Oxford. But there's a patch of road from, at the corner of Puckett, which is Lassiter Street. It goes all the way back down to the um, uh, to the city of Covington, and it kind of owns property on both sides of the road, and we were hoping that um, you know, since we received little to none, no money, that uh, possibly figure out a way to either patch it or, or resurface it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, so what was the name of the road again, please?
Lassiter Street, at the corner of Lassiter and Puckett, and it runs red straight in front of the community center that dries in, in the dump, and it kind of owns uh, most of the property, or all the property, then from there to the dump, and we was hoping that um, since we, well, just restate myself, that we receive little to no um, monies for the resurfacing of the road, that hopefully they can research that for us.
And I believe we can work in conjunction with the city to take care of that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Um, next, it's for Senate agenda. I seek a motion for approval, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson, seconded by Commissioner Schultz. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero. Thank you. Um, next is number nine. A resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to accept an anonymous donation, Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'll stand for this one. This is such a significant gift. As you all know, our animal control shelter project, their SPOSS project, was underfunded, and uh, we are going to do the best we, we can, and we hit, we, you did transfer additional monies from the capital improvements fund at our last meeting. Uh, as a result, I think partly of that, and partly because these citizens are, are very passionate about animals and about the, and wanting to improve their lot when they become involved with the county. They have anonymously donated one hundred thousand dollars towards the towards that project. And to that end, I would like to read um, this proclamation, which also is the language that is in Resolution R one oh one five nine um, for tonight. "A proclamation from the Newton County Board of Commissioners in the acceptance of an anonymous donation for animal control center improvements in construction. Whereas the Constitution of the United States approved by the voters of the state in November of nineteen eighty-two and effective July one nineteen eighty-three, provides in Article Nine, Section Two, Paragraph One thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. And whereas Newton County owns an animal control facility located at two-ten Lower River Road, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one four, and whereas an anonymous donor desired to donate one hundred thousand dollars for additional animal housing improvements to the animal control facility, and whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners gratefully appreciates the generosity of this anonymous donor, and whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners accepts the donation in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, and whereas this one hundred thousand dollar donation will be utilized for funding additional animal housing and improvements to the animal control facility, and whereas this gift is made with love to improve the chances of pet adoptions in Newton County, it will also be utilized to house more, excuse me, to house more strays so that they may transition into becoming a loving pet and family member. This gift is made in memory of our families who taught us that a pet's unconditional love is reflective of God's unconditional love for us. They will always be by our side when lonely or sad, be non-judgmental, be forgiving, and show us the life of joyful love. Now, therefore, be, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, that the generous donation of one hundred thousand dollars is accepted and shall be utilized for additional animal housing improvements to the animal control facility, and testimony whereof by Chairman Marcelo Vanes have hereunto set my hand and affixed my signature to confirm this selfless act and gift of love to our animal control facility." I will be presenting this to the donors. I'll be contacting them tomorrow and presenting this proclamation to them, and I know um, that they um, would like for me to convey to you your thanks for accepting this gift, and thank you for the opportunity, thanking you for the opportunity for them to do so. Again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, that's just another testament of what a great community that we live in. Commissioner Edwards, if you would, we're gonna give them opportunity to leave, and then, uh, guys, if you need to leave, um, at this time, you can. We're gonna, um, we're gonna go into about a, about a three-minute break to let the ones out who want to leave, and then we'll, um, we'll come back in session. We gotta, we gotta go ahead and get ready to go into our zoning, so we're gonna get back into session, guys. I seek a motion for um, number nine, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to make a motion, we approve Resolution R one zero one five one nine, a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners to accept an anonymous donation for animal control center improvements and construction. I believe it's okay for me to say in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question I have is that um, I think um, myself, and I'm gonna throw you in there, Commissioner Mason, we had talked a little bit about a, a possible Nokia animal shelter, and so, does this get us, does this get us closer to that? This, I guess, the question I'm asking, because I, you know, it was, it was just so much talk that we did about this prior to um, Commissioner Mason coming, coming aboard, and he had the same passion as some of the former commissioners about a Nokia, and we understand that, that always, that um, thing called money, uh, that would make a difference, and I just, I just maybe thought how good it would be if we did have a Nokia shelter. So, does it bring us closer? I guess it's to Mr. Lord.
Um, Commissioner, I'm sorry. Mr. Kerr, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the stipulation in the donation was that all of the funds be used to provide additional kennels, if you will, so that we would be able to hold more uh, animals for a longer period of time before they would need to be euthanized. One of the things that we have had a challenge in our animal controls facility is that it's very small, and because of the number of animals that we handle, even though our rates have gone significantly down from where they were a couple of years ago, one of the challenges that we, we have is that um, we are very seldom able to keep an animal longer than three days if it's a, if it's an owner, if it's a surrender, or if it's a stray that we've had to pick up before we have to euthanize the animal, because we just don't have the ability to keep them, because we have so many animals coming in. So, um, the donors wanted to be assured that that is what their money would be used for. So the donors wanted to be assured that that is what their money would be used for. And so, that is what it will be used for in the design or reflect those additional kennels.
Thank you. Yeah, all in favor? If that's five to zero. Thank you. Thank you so much. We actually running about six minutes late, and I apologize. Ms. Judy, if you would, please come tonight for our zoning.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
This evening, we have our first petition, well, my apologies. There. Our first petition before you this evening is a rezoning petition. This is REZ 19-000007. The property was DNXed from the city of Covington through legislation back earlier this year. And back on August 6, 2019, the Board of Commissioners established an existing land use map to HDR, which is High Net City Residential. And tonight, we're before you requesting to place zoning on the property. As most of you will remember, whenever a property is either annexed or DNXed, it comes into the local authority with no zoning on it. So tonight, we are here seeking to place zoning. And it is staff's recommendation that the zoning go back to RMF, which is multifamily residential. The property is located on Brownbridge Road and off of Benton Woods Drive. It is 21.81 acres. And it is currently developed with one unit of townhomes. I believe there are eight existing townhomes that are currently built. And there are two phases of this request, or two phases of the proposed preliminary plat, should the zoning be approved this evening. The current owner is the Bank of Madison. And the intent is to designate a zoning for a property that was formerly in the city of Covington. Should the board approve the petition this evening, we do request that you do this with recommended conditions. These are very lengthy, so if you'll bear with me, I'm going to read them into the record. If this petition is approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved, RMF, multifamily residential, conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows. A, single-family attached townhomes or single-family detached dwellings and accessory uses and structures. B, attached townhomes shall have a maximum of eight units per acre minus the hundred-year flood plain, subject to the approval of the Newton County Fire Marshal for the number of allowed entrances. C, detached single-family dwellings shall have a minimum lot size of at least 12,000 square feet. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, all streets shall meet the standards of public streets as specified in Division 605 of the Newton County Development Regulations. B, to avoid repetition and to promote aesthetic variation, the same front elevation of a townhouse unit shall not be duplicated within the townhouse building. C, architectural standards. One, a minimum of two and a maximum of four of the following exterior finished materials may be used. One, clay masonry brick. Two, natural stone. Three, manufactured stone. Four, traditional stucco. Two, a maximum of 20% of the total building wall area, with each facade being calculated independently, may contain the following materials. One, fiber-seamment siding at least three-eighths inches thick. Two, natural wood siding. Three, natural wood shake. Number three, polyvinyl chloride PVC siding is prohibited. Four, soffits, eaves, trims, and window frames may be finished in PVC or aluminum-clad materials. Natural wood shall not be used for these applications unless specified within a historic district. This does not apply. Five, where multiple exterior materials are used on the single building, they shall be only combined on each face horizontally with the heavier material below the lighter. For example, brick shall be below fiber-seamment siding. Six, the rear and side facade shall be of the same construction quality and the same exterior finish and exterior color as the front facade. Seven, balconies and decks shall consist of concrete or composite board decking materials and shall be supported by metal or wood brackets having an approximate size and strength with architectural columns or pillars also having an approximate size and strength. The required brackets or architectural columns or pillars shall have an appearance that is complementary to the architecture of the overall structure. Eight, doors and windows shall be rectangular in orientation and proportion with the height of the door and the window opening greater than its width. Nine, if visible from the exterior of the building, all gutters, scuppers, and downspouts shall be of compatible architectural material and complementary in scale and color to the facade. Downspouts shall be tied into the stormwater management system or collected for irrigation purposes. Stormwater shall not be discharged from the downspouts over the surface of the ground. Ten, no facade shall exceed 30 horizontal feet without containing fenstration treatment per story. Eleven, under no circumstances shall any mechanical equipment or related elements such as air conditioning units, banks of meter boxes, and utility conduits, HVAC mechanical equipment systems, satellite dishes, or any other similar mechanical equipment or related elements be attached or mounted to any exterior building elevation that is visible from a required sidewalk along an adjacent street or along an abutting or required open space. The last two pictures on the PowerPoint is the preliminary plat that was originally brought into the city of Covington. And this Phase One is what you see in the tax assessor site. Those lots are already defined. And then the land that is currently undeveloped would be a Phase Two. Again, there is a maximum of eight multifamily townhome units per acre. So there is a number maximum on here. I would also like to point out that this is in District Four and that this RMF zoning is specifically for townhomes or for single detached family houses.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Thank you. At this time, we're gonna open it up for the applicant and those that's in favor tonight. You may come at this time. You have 10 minutes to speak tonight. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Chairman. Commissioners, I'm Mark Walton with Patrick and Associate Surveyors. And I'm here representing Bank of Madison. Their attorney, Mr. Nix, could not be here this evening. The county, I think, is technically the applicant. But the owner has been provided a copy of all the conditions. And the owner can look at the conditions if the county does adopt them as presented by the staff. That's basically my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions and reserve any time for rebuttal if necessary.
Any questions, guys? Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? Would you like to speak in favor, or would you like to speak opposed? You can talk with him directly if you want, if you'd like. That portion of- Yeah, yeah, come on.
There are, and it's hard to see on the drawing up there, but hopefully you have a larger-scale drawing of it. There is an existing community house and a swimming pool and a parking lot. So, yes, there will be. And, you know, there's opportunities for some sort of a little play area also, but that's not constructed.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to speak opposing. You may do so at this time. Please come and state your name and address for the record, please. Anyone wants to oppose? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Commissioner Henderson, take a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve a planning petition, REZ 19- it's their recommendation.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? If that's five to zero, thank you. Ms. Judy?
The second and final petition for you this evening is a modification. This is MOD 19-000002. This is a modification of an administrative use permit that was issued back in 2008. The property is located at 13634 Brownbridge Road, and it is approximately 17.41 acres. It is currently zoned R2, single-family residential. It is also part of a PUD, and it's located in Tier One of the Salem overlay. The watershed is the South River, and the Commissioner District is District Two. The request is to modify the conditions from the administrative use permit, AUP 08-014, to remove the word temporary from the conditions five and six and to make the modular buildings permanent. If you will bear with me, I'm going to read the background of this request, which will probably answer a good many questions that you may have, as well as the audience. The background. In the middle of May 2019, the Office of Development Services first became aware of activity on the property through a citizen complaint stating there was building going on without a permit. The office records indicate that there was an approved administrative use permit for a place of worship. Building inspectors were sent to assess the complaint and found some maintenance and repair to the old decks, painting on the outside of the buildings, and cleaning up was being done on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club. The 2009 Newton County zoning ordinance was used to determine the following. The zoning on the property is PUD and R2, single-family residential, and falls into Tier One of the Salem overlay. The PUD zoning did allow for some commercial uses along Brownbridge Road. Due to the specifics of the PUD zoning, the use of the property is a Boys and Girls Club, a civic organization, which is an allowed use by right on the property and as an allowed use would not require public notice. However, the complainant further expressed concerns over the modular structures on the property and their compliance, in which staff identified the following information. The modular structures were placed in 2008 with an approved administrative use permit for a place of worship. Two of the conditions of approval, Condition Five and Six, refer to the modular structures. Five, approval is for the uses as described in the letter of intent dated July 18, 2008, to develop parcel 13-70C for temporary modular buildings, a parking area, and driveway access, and for use of a temporary modular building. Six, approval for the use of temporary modular buildings shall be for a three-year period from the date of approval of the building permits, at which time the buildings must be removed from site. Any extension may be approved by the planning director. Upon notification of the restrictions on the structure, the landowner, Stone Mountain Baptist Network Foundation, LLC, is seeking a modification to allow the current modular structures to remain and be allowed for use until such a time that the property can erect a permanent building. Again, the existing conditions were just read into the record as they stand. And the applicant is requesting to take the word temporary out of Conditions Five and Six and to allow them to remain again on the property. If you'll look at this picture here, and I apologize, I don't have the little red pointer. But this segue is into the conditions that will now be on the property should the petition modification be approved. A lot of the conditions talked about just the development of the property overall. There was an existing home on the property that is still there that required a building permit and approval if they wanted to use it for an office. The modular structures were placed on the property. It may be a little hard to see on the site plan right here, but they did install a deceleration lane as per the conditions of zoning back in 2008. This is what the current structures look like. And you can see that the deck is new and replaced, and that they have painted the structures. The structures have passed a fire marshal inspection, and they have been allowed to use these for the use on the property. So, the integrity of the structures, there is not a concern over the actual integrity. They are still strong and intact. They're structurally sound. The question remains as to whether or not the buildings now could be classified for permanent structures. So, should the Board of Commissioners approve the modification, due to many of the original zoning conditions already incorporated into the development, staff recommends the overall conditions be approved as follows. Recommended conditions, and these are much less than what was in your package. Again, I took out ones that had already been incorporated. The first condition would be, to the legal description and site plan received by the Department of Development Services on July 23, 2008, said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance and these conditions prior to the approval of a land disturbance permit. Unless otherwise noted herein, compliance with all conditions shall be in place prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Two, obtain all necessary permits for land development and building as may be required by the Department of Development Services. Three, meet all applicable standards of Section 510-480 of the Newton County zoning ordinance. That section is for a place of worship. Four, obtain all zoning approval for future uses, structures, and development. Five, maintain a 50-foot buffer along the east and north property lines of parcel 13-70C. Planning for buffers for parcel 14-4 may be delayed until permanent buildings are developed. Six, any change in existing structures greater than 25% of the exterior of the facade shall require the entire structure to be brought up to the current Salem overlay building requirements. And if you have any questions, I am here to answer them for you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Judy. Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chairman, so in the special trail of the working smoke detectors and radar detectors and stuff in that particular building, because it's gonna be hot and humid, we're gonna make sure that it's safe.
Prior, when we received the concern over what type of construction was going on, Captain Thomas with the Newton County Fire Department did go out and conduct an inspection of both of the units and as well as the decking for the handicap accessibility and so forth. And he did approve these structures to be occupied.
Anyone else? Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you. Judy, what happens if this is gonna be where the Boys and Girls Club is?
Currently, they are utilizing this property, yes, sir. But it's still owned by the- Stone Mountain, yes, sir.
Right, so it's actually for a place of worship. If they build a new building and they abandon this, those buildings have to be moved at that time?
The temporary structures?
Yeah.
The temporary structures were, and this is where zoning conditions get interesting. I did speak with our legal for land use, Paul Freyke, in regards to this. Because the buildings were tied to a condition of approval, the Boys and Girls Club have a by-right ability to use the property. But in order to use the structures, the structures were tied to another condition of zoning. So we had to address the allowance of the structures. Now, the conditions that I have actually amended do not speak or reference the temporary structures. Now, the conditions that I have actually amended do not speak or reference the temporary structures. Um, that it actually just allows the structures to stay as long as they are sound and capable of being used. It doesn't put any type of time limit on them. So, if a, um, a by-right use chose to, uh, take over the property, it was no longer considered a place of worship, the structures are legal, would be, if approved, legal non-conforming structures, and would not have to necessarily be removed. Until they were no longer, the same way as a house or any other structure would end up just dilapidating over time. Now, if the, the board would like to entertain a time limit, um, we certainly can do that, but you may also wanna hear from your property owners as to what their vision is in the future for the property.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Judy. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Like most buildings, you know, it has a, uh, occupancy, so, how many people could be in this structure? Could be housed in?
I, well, I don't have that number in front of me, but I do know that the fire marshal did set, um, limitations on each of the buildings, and I, I would have to have his report to tell you exactly how many, but I would, I would assume that your, um, your, your user, the Boys and Girls Club, have facilitated their programs around to know how many people could be in each structure. I'm not sure how they work their program, but there is a limit as to how many could be in each structure, and same way in any open public meeting place.
Thank you so much. We're gonna open it up now, um, for the applicant and those in favor. Uh, you may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. You have ten minutes to do so. Um.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bobby Gilstrap, and I'm the Executive Director for the Newark Foundation, uh, Stone Mountain Baptist Newark Foundation. Uh, our address is PO Box nine eleven, Conyers, Georgia, three zero zero one two. Put me on the spot, I'm glad I remembered that. Let me say thank you to you tonight for, uh, considering our modification request. Let me also say thank you, uh, just to brag a little bit on some of your folks that are helping us. Uh, wanna thank the zoning administrator, Tracy Hernandez, and, uh, Sheena Appleweight, who's your city planner, who have both been very, very helpful to us, uh, in kinda navigating, knowing what to do, uh, that kinda thing. So, we just appreciate their helpfulness in helping us along the way. Uh, just a couple of things. Um, we took ownership of this property, uh, right at seventeen acres, uh, last fall, so coming up right on a year. Uh, in, as she mentioned in her report, uh, about May or so, uh, the Boys Club, we were delighted that they had come to us and said, hey, they needed a place to be able to meet. They're planning on building a permanent structure, but they needed a place to go ahead and start, uh, serving the community, basically. And, uh, so it happened to be in the prime location for them where they wanted to be, and so we were delighted to be able to work out an arrangement with them to be able to put them in there. So, that's kind of the short-term intent, is for them to go ahead and be making an impact, helping the kids in the community. Uh, as you know, uh, in that part of the county, there are several schools right there close, huge housing developments there close, and so all kinds of opportunities for them to be able to really develop young people, to help those young people have a successful future. And, and that's part of what we wanna do as Newark Foundation, not through the Boys Club, but as Newark Foundation, our long-term intent is to be able to have a church planted there. And so, we would like to start a new church. Most likely, that would be in partnership with another local church, maybe more than one local church, and the Stone Mountain Baptist Association. And we would, uh, eventually come in there and be able to do that, uh, in the long term. There's no church planter or anyone ready to start there at this moment. Uh, and so, it's been great to have the Boys Club to be a partner with us, and us be a partner with them, for them being able to have the property. Uh, let me real quickly, uh, recognize those here from the Boys Club tonight. I know the Executive Director for the Boys Club is here, Nikita Williams. Nikita, would you mind standing for a second? And then, if real quickly, I know there's several of the young people and others, if, e- everybody from the Boys Club, if you will stand at here, I know there's several at least. There we go. Thank you. We appreciate them being here and just, uh, giving support. Uh, they have a real passion and desire to make an impact in the community. Now, long-term, for us, the intent is to be able to come in and obviously remove those, the, the modular structures, obviously, be able to build a building there that would be obviously a permanent placement in the community, and then have a church that started there that's able to continue to impact the community. And most likely, would continue to be able to partner in some way, shape, or form with the Boys Club, uh, because they're gonna be serving all in the same area of the county at that point. So, that would be one of our desires, to be able to do that, uh, for the days ahead, long-term. Uh, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Kelly Robinson. I am, um, a resident at one fifty-five Adrian's Lane. I am a homeowner in District Two, where this facility is housed, and I just wanted to speak in support of the Boys and Girls Club. Um, I have found it to be a well-respected organization with positive impacts in our communities. It is utilized by all socioeconomic levels, and, um, the population served is comprised of all demographics. It has been my experience, which expands different cities and states, that neighborhoods that have Boys and Girls Clubs, um, utilize it or view it as a community asset. It attracts families seeking educational and recreational activities, and these high-quality programs include education, the arts, health and wellness, career development, character, and leadership. So, with these things in mind, and the positive, well-respected background of the Boys and Girls Club, I hope that the Board of Commissioners would support this endeavor and approve this as a permanent structure. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Denise Williams, and I live at one five five Long Creek Drive, Covington, Georgia. And I also live in the district where the, um, Girls and Boys Club is located. Now, I'm in favor of it because I've been a pedestrian for the last four or five years. We need an outlet for our youth, because they don't have anywhere to go, no activity here. So, I'm in favor of it, and I can see that it will really benefit the community because the age group that is serving thirteen to eighteen, that is the age group that we need to really have a grip on our youth, and so they won't be in trouble or committing crimes. They'll be at our facility. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak in favor? Anyone else wanna speak in favor? All right, that portion of our public hearing is... Please state your, your name, your address for the record, please.
Um, my name is Duval Hill, and I'm a member at the Boys and Girls Club. And I really like the Boys and Girls Club because it's a safe, fun environment that everybody can go to, and you're not judged, and it's like a, it's a team bonding site where you get to meet new people, try new things, and we have fun activities, and it's a nice club.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wanna speak in favor?
Good evening. I'm Shaquilla Henderson Baker. I reside at forty-five North Woods Springs Drive, Oxford, Georgia, which is located in District Three. Um, ironically, I also serve as the Chairman of the Board of Education here in Newton County. Um, I greet you on the behalf of the Boys and Girls Club, um, in favor of this change. Many times in the community, we have always said we don't have anything for children to do. If you're a longtime resident, we used to have a movie theater, we used to have a bowling alley, we used to have a lot of activities for kids to do, and that has long gone away, so our kids have to go to neighboring communities to do something. So, here we have an opportunity for the kids to be involved, as the young man just stated, to be involved in positive activities, to get mentorship, to learn to be positive citizens in this community. So, I would hope that the Board of Commissioners would support this. A couple of years back, we had asked questions to the community of what they wanted to see on the West Side, and they did wanna see something for the West Side community, for teens, for somewhere for them to go. So, it would bring great pleasure, not only to us, not only to members of the Board of Educate, uh, Board of, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, and not only to the community, but to the teens. It's our due diligence to give them something to make them better people. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much. Anyone else wanna speak in favor?
My name is Devin Hill, and I attend the Newton County Boys and Girls Club. And the reason I attend is because it's like, it's a safe place that you can go to, where you don't have to worry about people judging you, and you can go there for like, uh, more after-school curricular activities. Instead of going home and doing nothing, you come to Boys and Girls Club and make friends, and go to extra activities, and have fun, and meet new people.
All right. Anyone else wanna speak in favor? This, that portion of our public hearing is closed. Thank you guys so much. Um, now, we wanna open it up for those that want to oppose also. Um, you have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come at this time. Uh, state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm John Miller. I've been a resident of this county for forty-one years. I saw the last teen club in this county have to be closed because of problems that they added. I can't name them because I was not privy to that information, but the clo- club closed because of conduct problems. But I'm not opposed to the cl- the teen club itself. What I'm opposed to is the two house trailers that you, uh, Ms. Judy called modules. They're nothing but house trailers. They've been moved in, and we have more tar on house trailers in this county that can't be put in. It was put in for the church, and I don't, didn't oppose it. But I do oppose this still being there when the churches moved. And I don't like the possibility, the, the Commissioners having a pet project and moving it from one district to another one. The one that was in, pushed this thing with the county is from District Three, and I live in District Two, which is right across the street from this teen club. And I'm opposed to the modules that they call, that I, I call house trailers. Uh, I wish that you would consider that this is, if I, as a resident, want to do something on my property, I have to have approval, and I can't get approval for a house trailer if I wanted to, because it's against the county covenants. So, I thank you very much for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that wanna speak, uh, opposing? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Uh, Commissioner Mason, I seek a motion, please. I'm sorry. Commissioner Schultz?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, I need to recuse myself because I am very much involved with the Boys and Girls Club, and so, and out of,
Thank you, ma'am. Um, Commissioner Mason, please.
Uh, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I actually seek a motion to approve MOD one nine dash zero 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 two, um, for the location on one three six three four Brown Bridge Road for, uh, the applicant of Stone Mountain Newark Foundation Incorporated.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? Thank you, sir. Uh, it was a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Uh, any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah.
Can we go back in the, um, minute, make that motion?
Yes.
State that motion like that, with conditions?
And I wrote it, man.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve MOD one nine dash zero 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 two with the approved conditions stated by, uh, Ms. Judy Johnson.
Commissioner Edwards? Thank you. Um, again, it was motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Uh, now, we open it up for the discussion. Commissioner Mason?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to, to state that, um, I know there were some concerns with the modules that, that are being placed there. Um, and I, and I think when you look at what the Boys and Girls Club, what they have done to actually beautify the facility, um, if you take a tour on the inside of the facility, it looks immaculate. Um, from what I can see, it's being kept up very well. Um, I know that, um, previously, there were some ordinances and things in place that stated that maybe this wouldn't be, uh, the most appropriate for our community, uh, and it was allowed for the place of worship. I do also believe that, of course, this is, from what we've seen, a temporary location for the Boys and Girls Club. Um, I even went and spoke to some individuals that initially opposed them being there. Uh, they did state to me that they have only seen or heard things that were positive. Uh, they haven't seen any, um, misconduct from any of the youth. They haven't seen any negative things going on in the community by it being there. Um, I, I think sometimes we do, as a community, have to begin to think outside of the box, and not put our community into a box. We see that it's something positive that's going on for our community. It's something that's positive for our teens, for our youth, and so I think we wanna look at it from that aspect. What positivity is it doing for the youth in our community over, um, what type of facility that it is? Um, I think we kinda wanna look at that to say, is it helping our community? Is it helping our youth? And from what I can see, it is, and so, and it being a temporary location as well. So, I, I think that this board should support that, um, because it is something positive for our community, and we can definitely look at, um, possibly a different infrastructure later on down the line, or as, um, Mr. Gilstrap said, long-term, it will be for a church community, but we wanna at least have the Boys and Girls Club to have a, a facility right now where they can incorporate those programs, so.
Thank, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, um, I don't have a problem with the Boys and Girls Club or the church or any of those uses like that. The problem with a modular home unit and it becoming from a temporary to a permanent, um, fixture there. I, I think if, if, if we allow it to be permanent, then I, I think politicians, elected officials, whatever you wanna call them, um, get complacent and say, well, we gave you a trailer two years ago. We're not gonna build you a Boys and Girls Club. So, I, I think there's a tendency there. Once we, if we say we're gonna make it permanent, we're gonna get complacent, and we're not gonna be, it's not gonna be on our radar anymore. I think it's important enough for the community to keep it on radar. So, I'm more for it not being a permanent structure, uh, to keep it temporary, whatever those conditions are for that. As long as the church wants to use it, as long as the Boys and Girls Club won't use it like that, I'll keep it going. I don't, keep it going for ten years, right? It doesn't matter. But I don't want to lose the importance of a freestanding structure for Boys and Girls Club, a facility that is built for those purposes with those, uh, proper amenities associated with that, whether it's a, a splice project or some other project. I think it's, uh, critical for that. Uh, the church I know is going to, they're going to need the trailers for modular units. If they build a church there, they're going to have to have those there for a period of time to accommodate their worship services, so I have no problem with that. I just have a problem with going from temporary to permanent. That's, that's my struggle with this issue.
Uh, Commissioner Anderson?
Hmm, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You, you know, when we first talked a little about it, you know, and, um, and Commissioner Shaw, she was, she was telling us, and I think she had the belt, and she put it on top of the horseshoe, and she said, you know, and I thought we were going to be putting, um, at least, for her district's splash money, correct me if I'm wrong, about a half million dollars into that particular, uh, project to build a real decent, really nice faci- facility for our kids. And, you know, and I don't think nobody up here is against no Boys and Girls Club. And we, you know, we need all the help we can get for our children. You know, I personally say, you know, we need to put, you know, Jesus in everything we do. Um, so we need something nice. I think that it shouldn't be temporarily. We should figure out a way to build a really, really nice structure for those, uh, for those kids. Something they can be proud going to, and something we can be proud of as a community. And, you know, and I, I used to live in a modular home. Them things got hot in the summertime, if my memory serves me right. And, uh, there was, um, you know, the air conditioning on the trailer would always kind of break down because it was an old air conditioner. And so the only thing, what I'm saying is, I think that, um, you know, we should be moving forwards instead of backwards. I think we should be partnering with the school system, um, in order to build a very nice facility or help partner together, build a very nice facility for our kids that we all know they need and they deserve in our community, and partnering with the church. Because there's no better partner than when you can partner with Jesus Christ. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Edwards, Dan, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, I, if I heard Mr. Gilstrap correctly, these structures would be removed when the Boys and Girls Club signed a permanent home and/or the church, uh, a permanent church was built on the facility. Yeah, I, now, I, I heard, I understand what, uh, Commissioner Cowan is saying. And as long as the Boys and the Girls Clubs use these buildings, um, they're fine with me. Uh, it's, it's a wonderful cause. I heard these two young men both step up and say, uh, a safe place. Um, they didn't have to tell me anything else. I was, I was there, but, um, I would, I don't know how we, to address Commissioner Cowan's concern and the concern maybe I'm bringing up now is, is how do we, um, ensure that these structures, when the, when a, when a permanent church and/or the Boys and Girls Clubs along units utilize these structures, that they all remove such, uh, in the manner that, uh, Mr. Gilstrap, or the way that Mr. Gilstrap described?
Um, I'm gonna ask, before you come up, I'm, I'm gonna ask Ms. Judy, if you would, please come back up, because I think this is, um, um, a very important issue, and I want to make sure we all get the right information. I'm, I'm gonna let you answer some of these questions once he gets through.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of different things as well. So if we decide that it's not going to be permanent, uh, we're not going to change it to permanent, it's going to remain temporary, how do we make it set or structured where the Boys and Girls Club can still participate or still have their programs and activities in this particular module or this particular structure? Um, and in addition to that, um, if we make it permanent, um, are we able to even come back and possibly change that if we want to take those structures away? Is that possible?
Okay. To address the second question, unless it was set as a condition, or unless the owner of the property requested modification, the conditions would be as the conditions are. Let me offer, in, in reference to the first question, let me offer you two, two different types of conditions that you could consider to add to it. One would be to extend, um, the temporary time period and, and a condition that would read very similar to, approval for the use of the modular buildings shall be for a blank period of time from the date of the approval of the modif- modification, at which time the buildings must be removed from the site. An extension may be approved by your planning director, if you wanted to say the ten years. If you wanted to give them five years in which to try to build some type of structure, and then maybe grant whomever is sitting in the seat of the planning director the ability to extend that one time, which would give you ten years. Or you could also do a condition that would be very similar to, um, upon completion of a permanent structure, the modular buildings, uh, shall be removed within sixty days of the issuance of certificate of occupancy to a permanent structure. Um, and, and I would ask, because this is kind of a lot of moving parts, um, because our county manager did, uh, play in the role of planning. Can you think of anything additional or, or something that might be a, a different way to? But, but unless it's put in the conditions tonight, when the conditions are set, they ride with the land. And unless that owner comes back, whomever that owner may be, and wants to modify the conditions, we would not have the ability to go back in, unless the structures became dilapidated or something where they could no longer be used.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Carr, please.
Um, I, I would agree with Judy's recommendation, and I think the language there would be fine. I believe giving the, um, Boys and Girls Club or the property owner sixty days to clear the property to have those removed would be sufficient time to have those removed. And I would agree tying it to the certificate of occupancy for their permanent structure. That way, they'd have an opportunity to move into their permanent place before they had to vacate, yes. Um, and whatever timeframe that you all believe would be appropriate, I think you, it would be appropriate to put a timeframe on it in terms of, uh, number of years that the buildings would be, uh, allowed on-site. And then with the additional condition that, uh, they come back to or that they remove.
How, how do we, um, don't make, we don't leave nobody out. How do we do that without leaving out the church? Because if, um, without leaving the church out? Because I think he was saying that if they leave, they will want to start the church back up.
Well, I think then, um, the property owner would have to agree to the conditions. Whoever that property owner, if it's the church, which I believe is correct, then the church would have to agree to those conditions. If they do not want to remove those or have those structures removed, then they would not want to agree to the, uh, conditions.
So once the Boys and Girls Club leave, let's just say they left in, in five years. Once they leave and, uh, the, the clock starts ticking on the sixty days to remove the, uh,
Yes, sir.
It don't?
No, a- actually, there's two different things, and we may have kind of confused this. There would be one condition, and you don't have to accept both. You can accept both, or you can accept one or the other. One condition I propose would be approval of the modular building shall be for a blank period of time from the date of the approval of this modification. And y'all can give me that amount of time, at which time the buildings must be removed from the site. An extension may be approved by the planning director. And then a second condition, either accompanying this or completely standalone, would be upon the erection of a permanent structure, the, uh, temporary bill, or not tempor- the modular buildings would be removed within sixty days of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Is everyone clear on how those two would work? Okay.
Any? Um, uh, Ms. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to say, maybe that's a question that we want to pose to the current owner.
By all means.
Um.
Mr. Gil, yeah, if, sir, if you would, please come up.
Okay, specifically, what are you wanting to address? Which of those conditions would make more sense?
Well, actually, what I want to ask is, is there ever any plans to erect a permanent structure, like a building?
Sure.
Or do you want to keep those modules there?
No, 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 that, in fact, from the beginning, um, in fact, both of the buildings were donated to us. One was designed as a worship center by the Georgia Baptist Mission Board. And they donated that one building, which has a larger assembly area, if you walk through the building. Uh, the other building has more classrooms, and Philstone Corporation donated it for that purpose, uh, at that point. So they are both good, sound, structural buildings. The intent, though, uh, when we took the property back over last October, is to eventually be able to build on that property. The farmhouse that she noted on the, the map, uh, would probably be eliminated because it's kind of in the way, to be honest. So it would be eliminated, and on the back leg, it's kind of like, it looks like the state of Louisiana almost, the way it's laid out, right? Kind of a boot. In the back section of that, yeah, 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 if you look at that, in the back section of that, you have right behind the farmhouse is where your, uh, your water reservoir is, basically. So you can't build anything directly there, okay? But back behind that, on the seventeen acres, there's a substantial amount of area. And that's probably where, uh, a main primary worship center would be built. Any additional, like educational space, or family life center, or young people, that kind of thing can be built. With, with a piece of property that size, it has all kinds of potential for things that would connect with the community. Once, and what she's saying is, once the CO is, is, or the certificate of occupancy is issued, once that's issued, those buildings are irrelevant. Because by that time, you have a permanent structure that a, a church would have. The Boys Club is in there temporarily, because they're still in the process of raising money, that kind of thing. To be able to put up a permanent structure, not on this property. They're here temporarily, but it's in the community where they want to be. And then within, well, they don't even know for sure, but, uh, potentially another year, year and a half, two years, maximum maybe three years, they'll have the funding, that they'll be able to get a building up and move into a good, mentioned, uh, having a nice facility. And they'll have a facility there, and then you'll have both the Boys Club, and then you'll have a, a church that will be there, that'll be able to impact the community as well.
So you're, you're basically wanting to build an actual building, a permanent structure, within the next year or two?
No, 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 not, not within the next year or two, uh, but, but down the road. That's the ultimate. Uh, they, they, yeah, there's a long stage in trying to start a new church. So that would probably be anywhere from a minimum of twelve months to probably eighteen months to two years before a church would start having public worship, in that sense. But they would probably start in one of the modular buildings initially. But the worship building won't hold but about sixty-five, maybe sixty-eight, as far as set up like a worship center, okay? So they couldn't have substantial growth there anyway. They would have to do something else. So, and then while they're building, they would have to be able, they may even rent from a school or something else, I don't know. Uh, that's all down the road. But it would be several years down the road before you would actually have a permanent structure.
And, and that's how they do it most of the time. That's how First Baptist is doing it in Oxford.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So that's pretty much protocol that they use to start off a church.
Yeah.
Until they get, know their members, and then they remove the trailers. Is that correct?
Right, yeah.
So you would basically remove those trailers and, and build, once the church got in, and started growing?
Yeah, the smartest thing of those two conditions she's given you the options for, the smartest thing would be based on getting the certificate of occupancy. Because once you have that, now you can move in. So they can have worship, they can have Bible studies, they can do whatever they want to because they have a certificate of occupancy. If anything holds that up, uh, we wouldn't want to constrict the church to say, from the time you dig, dig in the dirt to start, then you have to remove it in a certain amount of time. Because if you've ever built a building, you realize that there's a lot of variables, you know, in that. So, so by the certificate of occupancy, that'd probably be the smartest thing.
All right, thank you, sir.
Anything else? Anything else?
I think we do.
All right, thank you.
Oh, Ms. Judy?
Yes, that's, that's like, if we can add that condition.
Um, so if I'm understanding correctly, we are going to, to add one additional condition, and that would be condition number seven. And that condition would read, um, upon the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy for the primary structure, the, uh, modular structures shall be removed within sixty days. And Ms. Jackie, I may need to reword that, but that is the intent, that upon the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, that the, uh, structures would be removed within sixty days. Um, the only thing that I will point out on that is that that establishes no set time period. That only states once the building is constructed. That, I just wanted to make sure if that was in someone's mind that it needed to be tied to.
Uh, Commissioner Cowan?
I want to make sure I'm clear with, that eliminates the need for the language to be changed from permanent, from temporary to permanent.
Correct.
So this will still be a temporary building, subject to the issuance of the cer- uh, certificate of occupancy upon completion of the building.
Correct, yes, sir.
And the timeframe is, it could be whenever.
Whenever they get it.
Uh, and I, I really have no problem with that. I just don't want it to be, uh, permanent trailers there when we do have a county code that says, you can't have that. Or parts of our county codes say that.
Okay, yes.
So, so let me do this. Um, Commissioner Mason, if you don't mind, can I ask Ms. Judy to state that motion? And then you make the proof, or you know, offer?
Would you like for me to, uh, propose the motion or reread the conditions? Propose the motion. Motion to approve MOD nineteen-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-two with staff recommended and an additional condition seven.
So move.
Yeah, time attorney, I thought we had a motion, we had seconded, we, we finished, act on it. Then we stopped to change, shouldn't it be amended?
That's what we're asking you to do, yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards. All right, thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner, um, Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? The pass is four, one recuse. Next on the agenda, is, agenda is item number ten. Thank y'all for being here. We're going to give them just a few seconds to leave. Thank you guys for being here tonight. Thank you so much. Number, uh, we're going to go ahead and move forward. Well, item number ten, EMA Purchasing, Newton County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, um, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, item number ten and number eleven are both, uh, related, however, item ten, um, is the, in your package, you'll see that what you have is a proposal from Lux, um, uh, Consulting for Mitigation and Planning Corporation, um, to create, uh, the update to our Hazard Mitigation Plan. I've asked Jody Nolan, our Emergency Management Agency Director, uh, to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about what the Hazard Mitigation Plan is, and the components of it. And then, um, under item eleven, uh, then you would be asked to approve the contract with Lux Mitigation and Planning for that, uh, project. This is, this project, I will mention, is completely FEMA funded, um, and the match that we would have for the contract, uh, is, can be in-kind services, which is what we intend to do. So with that, I'll ask Mr. Nolan if he'd come up and, and address the board, and tell us a little bit about the mitigation plan and, uh, the update.
Did y'all have any questions, or would you just want me to kind of give you a layout? Uh, thank you for allowing me to come up before you today. This is one of the many mandated requirements of the federal and state government for us to be eligible for a multitude of funding, uh, that not only includes federal reimbursement during the event of a federally declared disaster, but a lot of our, uh, federal grants are dependent, and we maintain, actually, a multitude of agreements and documents, two of the main being a Hazard Mitigation Plan, there in front of you, and a Local Emergency Operations Plan. And with the Hazard Mitigation Planning, uh, grant, although it is mandated, they do provide funding for that. And so every five years, we have to update our plan, and then our plan is based strategically on the disaster that may have occurred in that past five years, the disasters that may have become more prevalent, like a large facility moving into your area that may pose a different type of hazard that we didn't have exist five years prior. And, uh, they give us the money to update it, and, and you can see the stuff there in front of you, and, uh, they both cover man-made and, uh, natural disasters, to ensure with this update that we would be eligible for a multitude of federal funding. So, uh, the total amount of the project, I believe you have that in your packet, again, this is fully funded by the federal government, total cost is, uh, thirty-two thousand dollars, of which the federal government pays twenty-four thousand, the state government pays three thousand two hundred, and our local share, forty-eight hundred dollars, is funded by in-kind services of the people just showing up at the meetings and providing their, um, salary vouchers. Because this is about a six-month process, so in reality, there's no additional monies that the county has to come up with to help to fund this project, just participation by not only you guys, or via participants, uh, leaders in our municipalities, as well as a multitude of church and civic leaders throughout the community will help us with this project as it moves forward. Lux Mitigation, you guys have already, uh, we had a RFP that was sent out, Lux Mitigation was chosen out of the RFP, uh, that was presented at a previous board meeting, and they were selected. I would mention that Lux Mitigation, Katie Westbrook, the CEO of Lux Mitigation, she's currently doing, uh, Hazard Mitigation Updates for twenty-eight counties throughout the state. And so she is an excellent choice to help us with this, and, uh, she always comes in under budget, and, uh, sometimes we have additional funding left over to, to purchase additional equipment for emergency management after the process is over. So that's, that's what we have before you, and I hope that I can get your support with moving forward with the recommendation.
Hey, Jody, it's good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Um, we've got this, um, that's two agenda items, so if you do not mind, if we can take care of that first one, which is saying that the county will have a Hazard Mitigation Plan update to keep your funding, let's do that, get that approved, and then go to Lux.
Okay.
Lux had a standard contract, so there was very little change there.
Okay. So item number ten, I think I've read my, uh, the, um, the case with that, that's basically what entails the, uh, purpose and the project and the scope of a Hazard Mitigation Plan, and that would apply to item number ten on the agenda before you.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner, do you have any questions? Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
I would just make a motion to, um, uh, accept that the county is going to update their, uh, Hazard Mitigation Plan, so that it keeps maintaining federal funding.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz, and second by Commissioner, uh, Edwards. Um, any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero, thank you.
And again, item number eleven did kind of run in with item number ten, but I've, if there's any additional questions that you would have about, uh, Lux Mitigation and their involvement in the update to the Hazard Mitigation Plan, I'll be happy to answer any questions beyond what I've already said.
Any questions, Commissioner? Uh, seek a motion, please. Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the, uh, to accept the professional services agreement between Newton County, Georgia, and Lux Mitigation and Planning Corporation, in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz, and second by Commissioner.
Just, not to interrupt, but the, the total cost of the project is thirty-two thousand dollars?
Okay, so, but the one that she has here, uh, for Lux Mitigation, it's twenty-four thousand?
Okay. The, okay, um, the, the one that I have, that is, was the one that we turned in, it will not exceed the, uh, cost sheet. Like, if you want to jot these down, and again, I apologize, but the federal share is twenty-four thousand, the state share is three thousand two hundred dollars, the local share, as I mentioned earlier, would be all in-kind service, so that, so there'd be no additional funding that had to be provided by the taxpayers of Newton County for this project. So the total cost of the project, including our in-kind service, would be thirty-two thousand.
I understand what you're saying, but that's not what our document says. So I, I guess the question is, how, how should we word the, the motion? Should we want to not exceed the amount?
Not exceed thirty-two thousand, right?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, yes, sir, apologize.
Okay.
And that's including in-kind service?
Yes, sir.
All right, then I'm gonna, uh, amend the motion to say, um, to accept the professional services agreement between Newton County, Georgia, and Lux Mitigation and Planning Corporation, in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand dollars, which includes in-kind service.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz, and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Pass is five to zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is item number twelve, Fire Services, um, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, Chief Connor is not, was not able to be with us tonight, um, but this is the, uh, consideration for a lease on a piece of fire equipment, uh, which is our air and light truck. Deputy Chief Staff is here in case that you have some questions about the technical use of the vehicle, but essentially, um, this vehicle would be used on-site at fires to, uh, provide, um, lighting, uh, but also to provide, um, compressed air, to recharge the self-contained breathing units and so forth. Um, and so that is the purpose of the vehicle. The lease is a seven-year lease, the annual payments are eighty-nine thousand dollars. And, um, so we're asking, um, for approval on this. I will, I do need to note that I received some late correspondence from, um, Sam Van Vulcanberg, that there were some, um, minor revisions that needed to be done to the contract, so I'm asking that you, uh, approve the lease per, uh, the, um, attorney's approval, the final attorney's approval, so that we can have the lease signed. This is a, this is very time-sensitive, um, in order for us to, uh, get a, uh, price, after October twenty-second, there's a fifteen percent price increase, the total cost of this unit is five hundred fifty thousand dollars. We will save considerable amount of money if we can get the, the agreement signed. So what I'd like, I'm requesting is that it be signed, uh, contingent upon the attorney final review, and then we will ratify your signature at the meeting, the following meeting in November.
Yes, sir. Seek a motion, please. Commissioner Howell?
I make a motion to approve the, um, purchase of a equipment for fire services, particularly the air and light, uh, air and light compression, air compression truck, which I think we've already discussed that it was approved.
Yes, you approve the, us, or the fire department, rather, purchasing the vehicle, but this is the actual documents, though, that will lead to that purchase of the lease.
Hey, can you make that motion, uh, contingent on, uh, the county attorney?
Yes, contingent on review by the county attorney, uh, changes and modification. Will a subsequent ratification after the chairman's decision?
It's been motion by Commissioner, uh, Cowan, and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, pass, five to zero.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda is item thirteen, uh, Public Works. Mr. Kerr?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, what you have before you is an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city of Oxford to resurface, uh, Asbury Street, um, and I'd like to ask our transportation engineer, Chester Clay, to come up and to tell you a little bit about the history of us assisting some of the municipalities in the county with paving and, and how the, um, this would be paid for.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, we are, uh, proposing to, um, pave a short street in Oxford, and every year we've been doing this to help them out, it's about a day's worth of work, so our guys get in, get out, and the, um, the city pays for all the asphalt, and then we just provide the equipment and labor. It's just a way that we, um, we try to show good faith and help some of the cities, um, we help the city of Covington, of course, with the CID and the, uh, two seventy-eight, the county's participating in that, and then, of course, Portale, we've done some things for them, especially, um, remember the intersection at, uh, eighty-one and, uh, Crowe, the county had, uh, major participation in that construction, so, um, so we're just, uh, proposing to, uh, help them out a little bit this year, uh, just like we have in the past.
Thank you, sir. Hey, can you, can you, um, repeat the financials again, 'cause there were some questions about that earlier, can you, the city pay?
We estimate that it's gonna cost about eleven thousand dollars, but the city of Oxford is, um, will be paying eleven thousand, and the county will be contributing, um, our, our equipment and labor for a day.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Commissioner? Seek a motion, please. Second. It's been motion by Commissioner, um, Edwards, and second by Commissioner, um, Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero, thank you.
Thank you. Chester, if you'll hang on for a minute.
Okay.
The, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'll let you go.
No, go ahead, item fourteen.
Uh, item fourteen, um, we are seeking approval to purchase a truck from Snapping Shoals, um, it's a boom truck, and I'll let Mr. Clay tell you a little bit more about what it's used for, and what the cost of the new one is versus, uh, this cost.
Yes, a few years ago, the, um, Public Works Department purchased a seventy-foot boom truck, and we've been using that to, to, um, um, maintain the taller trees and whatnot, but we, uh, we've tried to use it to, um, to change bulbs and do some work on our, uh, traffic signals, and it just, it's unsafe, it doesn't work, it's too big for the intersection, you can't get around the wires, and it's also not very, uh, useful, um, with some of the smaller trees and the subdivisions, trimming those back. And so, um, we had purchased that original one, uh, the seventy-foot boom truck from, um, Snapping Shoals used, um, and they had this, uh, it's a, a forty-foot boom truck, it's called a squirt boom truck, you just pull up, you don't put outriggers out, and you just go up and, and, uh, either trim the tree, or fix the light, or whatever you need to do with it. It's very, um, a very good deal, actually, it's, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, two thousand and eleven, I think, new, they're a hundred and ten thousand, so we are asking that the board approve, uh, the purchase, and we are taking it out of our general fund, so I'm moving some money around, um, to, uh, make that happen.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Commissioner? Seek a motion, please. Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move for approval, uh, to purchase the Altech boom truck, in amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz, and second by Commissioner Mason. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? The pass is five to zero, thank you. Thank you, Chester. Uh, next is, um, um, item fifteen, uh, Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item fifteen is a public use agreement that we're asking for the board to approve between Newton County and Newton Trail Path Foundation. The, this agreement would allow us to utilize, uh, county funds to, uh, pave, uh, to begin paving the trail. Um, we have, uh, currently, we have three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, in the impact fee, uh, recreation bucket, if you will. Every time that we sell a building permit, um, we do collect impact fees. A portion of those fees go to the library, to roads, to recreation, to, and to administration of the program. So as we, uh, so we have collected that amount, and what we would, uh, like to do with that is to, uh, assist the Path Foundation, um, with, uh, paving, uh, that trail. So, um, we have been working with the, with the foundation, uh, this use agreement will, what this will do will allow us, they will give us, they are the primary lessy from the railroad, they will allow us permission, um, and to, um, pave the, we would enter into a lease that will allow us to pave the surface, then they agree to take care of all of the remaining maintenance and operations. Um, and we would do this as we, uh, beginning with this agreement, we agree, we are agreeing to do no less than two miles. Um, the part of the trail that's within the county, unincorporated part of the county, is a little over nine miles. Um, and, uh, so one of the things that needs to be done, too, before all of this is completed is repairs to the trestles, the old train trestles that are there. Uh, Greg Richardson with the Path Foundation is here tonight, and I've asked him to come to talk to you a little bit about the trail, um, and a little bit about its impact, uh, on the local economy, uh, and on our county, once, um, it is, uh, in a condition that is more conducive to, uh, people traveling on the trail. And Mr. Richardson, if you might want to.
Before you come, um, can you tell us, uh, one more time, so we, everybody be clear what those funds are coming from?
Yes, those funds are, are from the, uh, collection of impact fees. These are fees that are paid by builders, uh, when, uh, they come in to purchase a permit, um, we impose an impact fee, uh, based on the, uh, this is, uh, uh, based on the impacts of that particular development on, um, on the county infrastructure, um, and also helps to provide for recreation, uh, activities and recreation facilities, um, as well as the roads, and then as the, for the library.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. My name is Greg Richardson. I am the chair of Newton Trails. Newton Trails is a nonprofit volunteer-led organization working on developing a paved trail from Covington to just short of New Bern. We call this 14-point mile trail the Cricket Frog Trail. For those in the audience that may not be familiar with the Cricket Frog Trail, the trail crosses Pay Street, Elm Street by the county parking deck, other areas in Covington, and numerous road crossings in the county, including Highway 11 in Mansfield. Portale and New Bern are working to connect the Cricket, to the Cricket Frog Trail as well. When completed, this will result in a 17-mile multi-use trail that will connect four of the cities in Newton County. This trail will provide Newton County citizens with outstanding recreational opportunities for walkers, runners, and bike riders. The trail will connect parks, Turner Lake Complex, Legion Field, schools, residential areas, senior living areas, government services, and shopping areas. The Cricket Frog Trail will also draw in people and tax dollars from other communities. I was in Virginia on the Virginia Creeper Trail years ago and ran into somebody from Athens. And when I was explaining to him what we had an opportunity to do in Newton County, he was so excited about the possibility of being able to drive a short distance and come and enjoy this trail. Trails are driving economic development all over the country, and that is why so many communities are building trails. Right next door in Rockdale County, a trail is being developed that will connect one end of the county to the other. Many other communities across Georgia such as Carrollton, Noonan, and LaGrange are developing trails for their citizens. The Board of Newton Trails and the 1,300 citizens involved in Newton Trails appreciate Newton County's continued support for trails. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Greg, you know how passionate I am about walking. I, so this trail is going to be an asphalt trail, correct? Because the portion of the Cricket Frog Trail is concrete.
The county part.
So the county part that we're voting on is going to be asphalt. So who, how's the maintenance of that asphalt? How are we going to maintain that after this portion of this?
You'd be able to patch it just as you would any asphalt surface. The, the foundation is responsible for the maintenance of anything once we're done with our part. But it, and, but the, you could patch it just as you do anything. The surface will be sturdy enough that you can drive service vehicles on it. And so there would not, should not be a problem. And the base on this is, was the base from the railroad bed, which was, Chester, do you know how thick that was? 24 inches maybe? So, and typically what happens is if you don't prepare your base well, you don't have enough. That's where you get your depressions. Now, the traffic, 99% of this traffic that's going to be going across there is probably going to be in the neighborhood less than 300 pounds, I would imagine. By the time if you add a bicycle or just people walking. So those failures are going to be very minimal, I believe. And, you know, we intend to prepare the surface before we do put the asphalt down so that it will, that it will hold and that it will stand.
So, you know, I have five miles of concrete trail in Oxford. And I know that after 30 years, I have a lot of tree heaving under my concrete trail. And so I, I'm assuming that because this is on a railroad bed, those tree roots are not going to be as much. Correct assumption or is that?
There, there is a possibility for trees to cause problems for the trail. But one of the things I noticed on a trail I biked on recently is they have a way of trimming those roots by running a, a machine down alongside the trail. So every once in a while, we, we would be wanting to do that to lengthen the life of the trail as much as possible.
And who will be responsible for that?
We would be.
So Newton Trails will do?
Yes.
And so any kind of tree, any kind of foliage debris?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You and I spoke last night, pitch playing, uh, community kickoff. So I wa, I told you I walk this trail every day, portions of it every day, almost every day. And it's, it's great. I see, even when I'm not on the trail, I see, when I ride by Highway 11, I see people on the trail. When I go to Beaver Park, I see people getting on and off the trail at Beaver Park. So my only condition is we start on the Mansfield end of this thing.
Well, in fact, our priority is after a test thing, we would actually do from Zebra Road to Sewell Road is our first, first part.
There we go. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once the trail is completed, and I thank you, it comes to just shallow of New Bern?
That's correct.
What type, what type of security may you have in place for people who may be walking? I understand that statistics show that it's probably two to none, but there are at times some incidents that does happen on trails. And so, you know, naturally, you want to try to as best we can make sure once it is completed that for the sake of other people may be walking.
Yes.
What are your plans for that?
Well, security is certainly important to us. And one of the things that we believe in strongly is making sure that there aren't invasive plants along the trail for people to, to hide and to cause mischief. So we have a weekly maintenance group that actually clears out invasive plants and kudzu and that sort of thing. In, in critical areas, we've, we've been clearing, done quite a little bit of clearing in Oxford, on the Cricket Frog Trail in Covington, and even on the East Side Trail, trying to keep those invasive plants down, down so that, again, you have clear sights alongside the trail. And so that's, that's one of the things we, we do look at very carefully.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Let me, move it back up. I thought we had a motion for real one. I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we entered into a lease agreement to approve or cert, pave or surface two miles of the Cricket Frog Trail in, in unincorporated Newton County.
Agreement actually says that we agreed to do it, to complete a minimum of two miles. And I would recommend we stay with that line because I believe we will be able to do more than that by 2021. But that's the language in there. So I would, I would agree to, worded so that you're agreeing to approve the lease for us to do the surfacing without a limitation on the number of miles.
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to enter, I would like to enter a motion that asks for, that we enter into an agreement with Newton Trails to pave, to pave or surface portions of Cricket Frog Trail in unincorporated Newton County.
Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next is item number 16. Discussion and consideration of the historic Heartland Megasite. Ms. Mark?
Thank you, Chairman Baines. As you all may remember, this item came before, a couple of years back, and we did have another one that we had purchased an option on the land. That means that the county, at the end of the term of the agreement, or in a situation like here, the county can control the interest in this large acreage out near the megasite. We have already had a previous option that was placed on this property two years ago. We did that two years ago because the IDA at that time could not legally give the money necessary to fund this project. Therefore, it came through the county. Fortunately, partnering with the IDA, they will not have these back reports again because they have found a legal way that they can invest and purchase property within the county. So tonight, what you have before you is simply saying if they want to take our option that we purchased and transfer it to the IDA so the IDA may at some given point in time in the future use this as a mortgage for new growth. Whether it be the technical type stuff we have up here, we don't know. But the options will, if you choose to give those options to the IDA, it would be a simple paperwork transfer. Now, I will notice that we have two items on there. That's because there are two separate tracks that back up to each other. So I would ask Chairman Baines to ensure that we get a motion on both the BTV real estate holdings, which is the pages 135 through 139. And then we'll do a second motion to approve the agreement of Susan Wall's option to the Newton County IDA.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Schultz?
Sure. So I just need clarification. So we are transferring these to the IDA in the amount of a dollar. Okay. Because it says in here in consideration of the sum of a dollar. So essentially, we're just transferring that dollar, and then they can decide how much they want to use it, how much they want that sign on. It's not like we're transferring the dollar on our option. We're, we're just transferring that property by the sale of the dollar. Okay.
I seek a motion, please. I seek a motion, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion. To transfer the county's options on the historic Heartland Megasite assignment of BTV real estate holdings LLC option to the Newton County Industrial Development Authority, facts two, three, four, and five.
Can I get a second? Can I get a second? Emo, the motion fair for lack of support? Number 18, please. Number 18, Ms. Mark?
And Chairman Baines, when we're saying item 18, I seen that we are moving on cast the Susan Wall option?
I'm far, I'm far settled.
Oh, okay. Absolutely. This is the same option that we've discussed with the previous transaction, except this portion of that land is owned by Susan Wall. So what the IDA is seeking currently during our partnership is for that option to be transferred also to the IDA.
I seek a motion, please.
Sure.
Do we understand what we're doing here? I didn't think so. This, okay. Let me see if I can, if I'm wrong, let me know. Okay. State Economic Development has rights to, if they, if they bring a project in, they want to make sure that the local governing authority has the property secured. Either with option, which is what this is, or they got to buy it outright. Okay. Now, last year, we bought, two years ago, we had a option for $5,000. I was uncomfortable with it because I don't think the county can bond the amount of money that they were asking for. That was my whole problem. That's why I voted against that. This is transferring that right to purchase that, and the bonding part goes to the Industrial Development Authority. It's off Newton County. It's not, it's not the Board of Commissioners anymore. It flips over to the Industrial Development Authority. And if they want to come up and try to issue bonds for a lot of money, then they can do that. But it's not on the Board of Commissioners. So we're transferring what we have as our rights to them to allow them to secure bonding or purchasing of that property in some form in the future.
So if I'm not, so let me help, let me help Commissioner Cowan out. Still looking forward. I think it's the same, it's the same thing that we was actually doing in the first place. They came to us and asked us to do this.
Correct.
Now they, now they.
We're giving it to them.
Yeah, now they.
Not on us.
Yes.
It's on the Industrial Development Authority.
It's not costing us anything. We're just stepping back from the property, from the option and giving them the option. Over the option. Over the option. Not the property, it's not their property. It's for the option.
Commissioner Edwards? But if we hail, if we hail the option, that does, that does not mean we have to bond anything ever, right? Is that, that's, okay. So those two aren't mutually exclusive, what Mr. Cowan was saying, right? So, and, and my next question is, if we hand these options over to the IDA, what, what are we relinquishing in terms of oversight? Because my, my, my constitution is going to call me, not the IDA.
Absolutely. Will you state your question again that you have? I'm sorry.
So the second question was, if we relinquish these options to the IDA, what oversight are we, are we giving up with those, with those options?
Um, it is essentially like walking away. They're, they're going to stand in our shoes. This is not a commitment of the county to do anything further. This is the third time we've had one of these before us. And it's fortunate that they have been able to work out financing mechanisms so that the county doesn't have to be a part of that, that process.
Yeah, I want to remind y'all, this is what we was actually doing for the first place. The same, what they doing right now before we was actually doing.
And that's true too, yeah. Well, I, you know, I'm, I'm looking at some projects right now that have gone so well that the IDA's got. So I don't want another fiasco out in my part where I live. You know what I mean? So, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be critical. I just, this, this been some slow movement of some things that the IDA's involved with. I don't know whose fault that might be, but I, I, I really, my, my hesitation is with, is with giving up total control of, of, of that property. I mean, we didn't do that with Facebook. We didn't do that with, I mean, we, we had some, we had some control of that. I know there's a, a development authority down there, but if, if we can, if we think there's a partnership like that, then I, I wouldn't have a problem with it. I, I just don't, I, I have hesitation. I had hesitation when we originally talked about it, but I'm a little more vocal now, but that's just one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Well, my, and I, and I do understand that, Commissioner Edwards, but I will say that myself and Commissioner Cowan are on the IDA now. And, so you have two board members that sit on the IDA. So.
Um, just, just to make sure, we do not have to provide bonding for those projects if, even if we hail the, the option?
This was, if you guys remember, a conservation use that, and it had restrictions on the, what could be done on the land. It was a restricted covenant where the county purchased. So we have condemnation powers, but bonding, we would not be provided with bonding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Schultz?
Oh, this question is for legal, and I have a follow-up question. So if we were to ask the IDA, who wanted to purchase it ourselves, what would that, how much would that?
Less than 100,000? Less than one hundred thousand dollars. Um, keep in mind that this was, uh, just a pie in the sky idea back in the early eighties. So, um, later on, the county did acquire that, I believe it was eighty-nine thousand, but I'd like to go with just under a hundred thousand. We got it through it.
So I guess following through with what, um, Mr. Edwards said, uh, which is.
No.
Following up what, uh, how many current members of the IDA have?
Five.
And so we have two votes from the Board of Commissioners. So conceivably, we could be, uh, our two votes would be over the rules. Is there any requi- is, is, does there, is there any requirement in this option? And I've read it once, but no, I'm a little bit confused. That they would, they would, if there was a property where there was concern from our two members, that it would still come back to us? I mean, is there a way that we can have that kind of input? Because yes, we have two voting members, but that doesn't constitute majority. And so my concern is if we have, if our two voting members, say, all the IDA have concerns about a property that we've now opted, or given them the option rights to. And they vote, they vote some concerns, you know, what kind of rules do we have? And I do understand the arms length that we want the IDA to have in terms of bonding, but I just also know what Mr. Edwards is saying in terms of, we're the representatives of the people.
Um, just to kind of get full circle, um, you're asking what would happen with this? Just, they're two parallel entities that are going along for trying to hold this land so that it can be used for the mega site. So if Newton County Board of Commissioners has the option on this land, we would have the right to purchase that land. What the IDA is asking for partnership-wise is to say, county, now that we have removed those restrictive covenants, made the property more alienable, that you transfer those options to the IDA so that they can then try to get projects to come in? One thing that Commissioner Cowan said that's very interesting is that the state will notice how areas like this and have proven, you know, with what you all have done out there, I would think you could also find others.
But also, uh, let's just say, and I, and I hate to say this, but let's just say, um, we get a, um, let's just say we get a, a jaguar thing to come in, and they want us to purchase that land, are we willing to do that? So why would we house, why would we house them? Why would we hold options?
I'm sorry, I really see what you're talking about.
Absolutely, if we not gonna, um, and then, and, and guys, we gotta be realistic. If we, if we get a, a huge project, and the governor gets behind that project, that probably pretty, that project gonna come pretty much off. So who gonna be responsible for, for taking down that, that land? The board gonna be willing to do that, pay millions of dollars for that land? So we, we, you know, we gotta think about the whole, the whole ball there, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just some background, I've been a governor a long time. Uh, mid, early nineteen nineties, uh, Bryan County got into the situation where the state said, we're bringing in a, I think it was a Jaguar plant, exactly. And, but we want y'all, Bryan County, go down there and buy the land. Well, they went down there and put a tremendous investment in, and then they went to South Carolina. Um, they ended up getting stuck. So the purpose of, the logic of using options now is so that you don't get stuck down the road. You tie the land up so that the state knows, and there's the state economic development arms and our local economic development arms can market those properties and say, we've got this property secured by an option. Newton County's got an option, or the Industrial Development Authority's got an option on it. Let's talk seriously to whoever, Jaguar or Saab, whoever, car maker, whatever, uh, to try to get manufacturing into that, for those type, those type sites. That's the way, uh, the Kia plant is built, and some of the other places it's been built. My personal opinion is it belongs over in the IDA, Industrial Development Authority, and not in the Board of Commissioners, because what's gonna happen is, is what we discussed two years ago, they're gonna come in there and drop a bomb on you and say, well, we need, we need to bond forty million dollars.
Right.
And, um, I can't do that from a taxpayer-based situation. Now, from a Industrial Development Authority, it's a little bit different structure that they have rather than a Board of Commissioners does. So I think it belongs over there in their court, um, not in our court.
I agree. Um, anyone else? I seek a motion, please. Well, we don't item eighteen, I mean, y'all seventeen, yeah. I get a motion, please.
Second.
It's been motioned, um, by Commissioner Schultz, second by Commissioner Mason. Um, interdiscussing, Commissioner Henderson.
Well, you know, uh, it's just my comment, and it's all, I guess, it's all just a comment. You know, we've paid for a few years. I think this board has just been taking the responsibility that the, um, citizens have given to us to make a decision, make a decision or decisions on their behalf. He's been taking and just said, well, oh, we get somebody else who's not elected. And then they'll make the decision, and then ultimately, the taxpayers are the ones who, um, uh, who pay the bill. You know, and it used to be, that's where the book stopped, right here behind this Howard Port chute. And then we're passing on someone else, and I tell you, uh, I, I had this question asked of me, I think it was just a, uh, a few days ago. It said, what, he, uh, the chairman said, like, they said, uh, J C said, you know, I believe that the way y'all going, you don't need five commissioners, all you need is maybe just one, maybe we just need to be one commissioner county. Maybe something you need to put on the ballot, because if you elect five peoples, uh, to make a decision, and then you take it and pass out somebody else, you may not need, may not need as many. And so I don't think, we just taking a little bit of, uh, of the power that the citizen gave us to make decisions on their behalf. Someone whom they can go to, and if they don't like what you, how you make the decision, vote you out. Then, um, I think we're just passing on somebody else. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? All in favor? All opposed? Why you, can you state a reason why you say?
Same. Actually, it's just, uh, you know, I, I think, um, you know, I think just from the head, head of the citizen, New York County is just taking the power that they, they choose and just passing on somebody else who's not elected. I don't think that's where this government should be.
Thank you, passage, uh, four one, uh, one standing. Um, I'm gonna use chairman's privilege tonight to, um, recall for number sixteen. Recall number fifteen, if I can, um.
What we would do is, uh, Jackie will document the amendment of the agenda as it has become necessary to amend our agenda during such meeting. Then we will seek, um, a new motion, a new second-hand vote on that item sixteen.
So I seek a motion that we amend the agenda to, um, um, we discuss number sixteen, please.
Some of it.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz, and second by Commissioner Edwards, all in favor? Passage five to zero. Now, if we can go back to number sixteen and re-discuss that, uh, uh, Attorney Martin, please.
Um, these items are both similar, I mean, the property lines back up to each other in the tracks too. So, um, by approving seventeen, you're taking track one. Um, if on item sixteen, that's actually the figure, that's the four tracks of land that would most likely be alienable as, um, industrial site.
Thank you. Um, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, now that I understand the, the agreement, I move for approval of, um, the historic Hartland mega site option, assignment of BPV real estate holdings to, uh, Newton County IDA.
Thank you. I get a second, please. It's been a motion by Commissioner Schultz, second by Commissioner Mason, uh, interdiscussing. All in favor? All opposed? Passage four one. Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is, um, item eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, item eighteen is a supplement between us, Newton County, and MCCI, um, to him to take care of our Laserfish software. Greg Mann, our IT director, IS director, excuse me, is here tonight. And I'd like to ask Greg if he would come up and, uh, tell us a little bit about, um, the contract and why we are suppo- we are, uh, needing to, uh, protect the Laserfish and what we're doing with it at this point.
Good evening. Laserfish is our countywide document management system that's been in use for about fifteen years or so. We are on what's called a legacy version, uh, which means we haven't done any upgrades to it in the entire fifteen years it's been in service here. So there are some security issues that need to be addressed. We are running out of storage on that server. So we're gonna be moving to a new version of Laserfish software. We're gonna be getting ready, getting rid of some tired hardware. We're gonna be doubling our storage and moving it to our virtual infrastructure. We're gonna be curing a lot of problems that our DA's office is having with some of their tracker integrations that really relies on a very outdated version of the Firefox, Firefox browser to integrate with what the DA's office does. And that does pose a security ri- a security risk to the entire county network. That's going to be alleviated, we're gonna be getting some advanced electronic document routing capabilities. We're gonna be getting some, um, public portal capabilities for our ADA's so they can do read-only access to the Laserfish document system. And it's gonna give us a more complete and, more importantly, more secure and up-to-date document management system. Uh, this is need, this is, um, something that should have been done a long time ago. Thank you, Greg.
Um, any questions, committee, oh, seven, seven, any questions, commissions? Thank you, sir. Uh, I seek a motion, please. Thank you, sir. Thank you, it's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards, and second by Commissioner Cowan, interdiscussing. All in favor? Passage five to zero. Uh, next is, um, item number nineteen. Um, this is appointment to the CID aboard, um, uh, Ms. Kathy, Kathy Morgan has been trying to get this done for a while, uh, she submitted two names, I submitted them to you guys. Uh, the first name is, uh, Ms. Jacoby. So she gonna be the first one that we, um, the first one we take a vote on. Uh, yes, sir. Oh, we're voting on, uh, nope, we're down, we're down to the final, final one. So Ms., uh, Ms. Jacoby would be the first person that we, uh, that we vote on. Somebody's gonna pull the board first, and then we'll act our most, uh, Commissioner Edwards. Well, we actually can do both, um, Mr. Jacoby or Mr. here?
Here, okay.
Um, Commissioner Mason? Oh, okay. Commissioner Schultz? So, uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna be, I'm just gonna be clear, I don't need the one that we, and I just don't feel comfortable. So, uh, yeah, I yield to the rest of the board.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Cowan? Ms. Jacoby, thank you. So I seek a motion tonight that we, um, add Ms. Ann Jacoby to the CID board. It's been motioned by, um, Commissioner Schultz, and second by Commissioner Mason, all in favor? Passage four, four, four one. Next on the agenda is alcohol license, first reading, Crossroads, uh, Shell, Thirty-One Crow Road, Covington, Georgia. Summan, Hyson? Summan, Hyson, Hyson Lani? Um, that's the first reading. Um, first reading for T and H, one, one stop, one four six, two five, Highway Thirty-six, uh, Covington, Georgia, Sanani, Sanani, something like that? Yeah. That's the first reading. Citizen comment? This is an opportunity we allow citizens to come up and make comments. You have three minutes to do so. All right, it's time, please come up and state your name for the record, please.
Well, I wasn't, I, oh, my name's Thomas Buckner.
Thanks, sir.
Six fifty, please address. I wasn't gonna comment on the one item, but now I got two. How in the world, can y'all go ahead? You didn't get a second on that? Number?
Sixteen? Sixteen.
Okay. How can you go back? And then you went on, yeah, said, okay, 'cause that was dead, 'cause you couldn't get a second. How can you come back later on and revise it and get a vote on? I mean, the thing was dead, and that was it, that should have been here. So how can you bring it back like what you did? I mean, y'all can do anything you want. That just goes to show, y'all can do anything you want. Never, we don't have nothing, I mean, the law, the law, uh, ruling don't have nothing to do with it. Okay. I know, I don't get a comment on it. On just fifteen. How many people in here knows? What is the name of the trail? That don't, that don't matter about that. But how many people in here knows that this trail is the old trail that, that tried to get us to buy the railroad? That was the old railroad trail, and we voted it down. We voted to stop to buy the railroad. Okay, you're not buying it, but you helped paint it and all like that. And, and just like I told, uh, the, the, the county manager, uh, if we got any extra money, why can't you put it in, and, and, and lord of town? why can't you put it in, and, and, and Lord of Town Property Tax, put it in the, uh, the general fund and bring back the, give it back to the people? We have no business paving that thing. It's, it's, it's a private own, it's not a county own. The county voted down. They didn't want, well, they wanted it, but they, they didn't want it. We not gonna never get rid of that. We're gonna, I, I, I still got the old sign. Says, "No rail, no trails for, no, no rails for trails." But not, but we still, and we're putting money that was supposed, should be, I mean, I, okay, that, that, that money that you said, that you're supposed to be going to, to build the pavement, the roads and stuff like that. I mean, say we drive needs paving, why don't you pave it?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, huh?
Thank you.
Oh, uh, three minutes is up, man. No, man.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Ms. Schultz. My name is Teddy Fraser. I live at one-five-five Hinton Chase Parkway in Covington. Um, in regards to number twenty, I am new to the Covington area. This is my first time here. Um, I have to say I am delighted, like to see our government at work. In regards to number twenty, I do want to implore you, I see Newton County, Covington is expanding. A lot of developments, families are moving down here, and considering changing the zoning and giving permits to developers, I would like you to keep in mind that with large homes, four and five-bedroom homes, there will be families, children in the parcels. I would like you to require them to have a designated, um, amenities, a park, a dog run, something. If you would consider that in every application that comes before you, I would be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bernadette Smith. I live at fifty-one forty-two Wheat Street. I am the property owner there, and you might remember me, forty-three days ago, I was here requesting that, uh, air testing be put on the agenda, and at that time, um, and I certainly do understand, you were, we were told that we wanted to wait and see if there was a plan, if the governor had a plan, before that decision was made. Uh, forty-three days is not a lot of time. I understand that. Forty-three days was a lot of time. That was the amount of time that my husband spent in the hospital his last days. Never got to come home. I'm grateful for the air. I'm grateful for this community. I love everything. I love sitting there hearing about all the wonderful expansion. You guys are hardworking, and I do appreciate that. What I would like to ask, however, and especially after reading an article in the AJC on October the eleventh regarding the ethylene oxide issue in Colorado, Illinois, and Michigan, as well as here, that unfortunately, Georgia was not cast in a very good light in terms of proactivity with that situation, and that really saddens me because I'd like to see a lot of diversification coming here in the state of Georgia, also in Newton County. Um, in essence, right now, however, tonight, I would like to know if it is still the board's position to sit and wait on what our governor is going to be doing regarding the situation, and if that is the position, I would also like to know what do we have to gain by the waiting, especially in light of this last leak that happened regarding Bard while the city was doing its testing, a time at which you think they would have been on their best behavior and had their most competent people available. And, um, so that is my question to reiterate, and that is, is it the board's position to continue to sit and wait for the governor, and if so, could you please let us know what we might have to gain by that? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sean Brucio, twelve oh five Amber Drive. I find myself once again standing in front of you Commissioners, talking about ethylene oxide, and trust me when I say this, I'm as sick and tired of talking about ETO as you are seeing our orange shirts and pretty faces. Orange really isn't my color. I'm not an autumn. I'm more of a winter, so I would rather it be blue or red, but I didn't have a choice but to put it, sorry. Uh, we stand here tonight not expecting anything from you. What we've heard is we are waiting on the governor. The city of Covington has jumped into action, and we applaud their quick responses. October twenty-first, we will find out the results of the testing in Covington. Will the numbers be elevated? We do not know. I'm asking you tonight, do you want to be remembered as Commissioners who acted on behalf of your citizens to protect and serve them? Or do you want to be remembered as waiting? A lot can happen while we wait. Per the EPA's on admission and health value, ETO is sixty times more toxic to children, thirty times more toxic to adults. The EPA lists ETO as a carcinogen. That alone should make you pause. Commissioner, as you so eloquently quoted Plato, be kind for everyone you meet fighting a harder battle like cancer. History will reveal the truth, and the truth is all that we seek. Keep Covington and Newton beautiful. Keep Covington and Newton toxic-free. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Anyone else? Thank you so much. Um, Commissioner Cowan.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I read the same article in the AJC, and I was, I was kind of disappointed in the way our state handled this, uh, problem. Uh, but I've always said, I'm still thinking, and I continue to think, well, I'll be doing some testing in the county. I'm just still that way. Whatever it takes to get it done, let's get it done. Provide the data to the governor. It's just additional data. It's just information. I think, I think, um, it needs to be done.
Um, thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, um, you know, sometimes sitting, sitting behind, of course, you, you know, I, I often think, and I, I tell my wife, if she would be nice if I could, um, get somebody else sit here and, uh, address some of these tough decisions. But unfortunately, I can't get nobody. I've tried, but I can't get nobody to sit here and, and, uh, kind of address some decisions. But ETO, this is something that's been on my mind. In fact, I think we did a tour of BD. I invited a young lady who just come with me and another gentleman, which I'm, I'm bad with names, but they went with me and gave me some counter, you know, and, uh, their opinion, and thought we heard. But I tell you what I, what I found out, that it leaked for five days, and for five days, uh, they didn't tell anybody until after, uh, they found out and cut the leak out. And I just want to say this, and I, I've said this before, and I said this, that then, I have an old two thousand sixteen Chevrolet Malibu. And when the tires start going flat, it flashes up on the dashboard, the, the right tire on the right side is flat, going flat. So with the technology that we have today, there should be no reason for it to have leaked for five days. And some of us are like, guess what? They keep three hundred pound to five hundred pound barrels of ethylene oxide. We know, who knows how many? And what you think it does? Boom, it blows up. And so they're concerned me too as well, and I, and I asked the question, the gentleman's over giving them two. I said, "Well, what do you have in place to protect us in case somebody come in here and wants to want it to?" And he said, "Well, I got, uh, one security guard and nine-one-one." Man, I like to tell a lot, man, let me get out of here. But, um, this will be faced, a lot of people just saying, "Where's..." They wanted somebody else to stand up and do something for them, and there's nobody. I'm looking behind, man, I don't see nobody. Let's stop giving this sixteen billion dollar plan a pass. Just put up a permit, go in and find out what's going on. County came through, the city government had to permit, but what he did tell me, what he would do, if making it a part of permits, he would do whatever we asked him to do. I think we need to man up like we used to do, take responsibility, and stop this crisis in our community. Check all these old plans. Probably have a leaking bad stuff in our community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, thank you, sir. Commissioner Schultz.
Commissioner Edwards and I toured the facility during the leak, and that really dismayed me that we were led to leak, that we were, that there was substantial testing while we were there. I've been in communication with BD. I've also been out of town, but I, I communicated my dismay to them, and I expect an explanation to that. Because I've been out of town, I have not received that explanation, but I will continue to press them on that explanation because I feel like we trusted and we expected transparency. So in fairness to everyone involved, my hope is that they will be forthcoming with all of us. Now, that said, I want to pivot to something. I, um, attended the, the ACCG meeting on the second and third, uh, yeah, second and third of October, and there is an issue that is coming up in House Bill three oh two that will impact all of the work that we have done as a community to provide standards for our community of design standards for our overlay businesses and exactly the concerns that you share. It is important that we take a stand, that the state should, the state needs to be, to be reactive on state issues such as EPD. They need to focus on their responsibility with the EPD, and they need to stay out of local business. Local control needs to stay with local authorities. And so when it comes to design standards, that's an issue of home rule, and that is something that we need to follow very closely, that the state is not getting involved in home rules, and they need to focus on the issues that impact. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, where do I begin? I know, four minutes, exactly. Thank you. Um, tonight has been, um, eye-opener for me. Um, when I look back at the zoning case that was in District Two, it, it was really thought-provoking for me because I, I am one that is very, very passionate about economic development. And so I want to see our county develop from an infrastructure perspective in a lot of different areas. At the same token, I have a major love and passion for people. And when I looked at the Boys and Girls Club and I saw the things that they were doing, uh, I immediately thought that, wow, you know, people are trying to basically rid something that's positive within the community. And then as we sat at this horseshoe and went through the discussion, um, it made me reflect and think a little bit differently. Maybe we, as a county, do need to revisit our standards. Maybe we do need to really begin to look at the structures and the things that we have within our county. Commissioner Schultz just said it. You know, when you look at this, you know, House Bill three oh two, we should be in control of what's put in our county, of what's put in our districts, so that it can be the best of the best, so that it can be excellent. And I want to thank Commissioner Cowan. You really opened my eyes, um, to look at that situation from a different perspective, and that's what I love about this team. Sometimes we may not see one way, but then when you hear other perspectives, it comes out in a different way. Also, I do believe that we need to address that ETO issue. I read that AGC, AJC article, and it was very disturbing, um, and it is a complex issue, and I, I, I honestly believe, I know for me, once the data comes out, something I would plan to do, and would, you know, maybe even our board consider, you know, maybe we need to start having, digging deep into this data, having some town hall meetings to discuss this. Um, I know myself, I plan to start having those in District Two. I'm gonna have those town hall meetings. When we get the data and we get the information, we're gonna dig deep. We're gonna have those town hall discussions. We're gonna address the concerns, and we're gonna do everything we can to ensure that our citizens are safe. Uh, and that's, you know, one of the things that I plan to do is just really start having those town halls and dig deep into this situation and try to get it addressed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, kudos to our county manager and his team for the strategic plan and taking part in that. So, uh, my expectations would be here, maybe not far, see if that, that, uh, get together. Um, I didn't get to participate much, spent most of my time at the wing table, but, um, so, uh, the certificate of achievement for the finance department, congratulations, please pass that along. I think they both limited it all, but, uh, that is a significant accomplishment for our county. I just wanted to bring that to light. House Bill three oh two, Commissioner Schultz spoke about it. Um, her and I had talked about it earlier, I think before she went on her trip, and I spoke with Dave Belt and my state representative yesterday, and he is adamantly opposed to it. He, he tells me that, and for, for those that don't know, the state wants to take local control away in terms of ordinances, um, they would wipe out, they could wipe out some of the things that we have in place already if they want grandfathered in, and the state wants to set controls on our development standards, basically. To the minimum. So, uh, because if you look at the bill, uh, I think there are at least two authors of the bill, or developers themselves, developers and builders, so it doesn't take a lot. You don't, you, even me, I can figure that out. So, um, with that, I'm anxiously awaiting the results of, uh, the city's, uh, ETO tests. I know that Bard recently had a third-party test, or BD had third-party test. I have not seen, have I, are those, I know the results, but have they have not been released yet. So we have those results, third-party testing, and we're waiting on the city of Covington. So, um, I believe this board will take the next step once it understands clearly what, that those two, those two testing episodes will look. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, thank you, guys, and I echo, uh, Commissioner Edwards. Um, last night was, is, was, to use the mind of Commissioner Mason's word, it was, it was amazing, um, to see the community, uh, engaged with, uh, with department heads. Um, you know, it was, you know, it's something that you dream, you dream about it, 'cause, you know, you don't see it all the time. You don't see it like that all the time. And so, Mr. Kerr and, uh, his staff, uh, fosters, all of y'all, y'all are doing an excellent job. I mean, it is, uh, Brian Fowles, I'm gonna call your name, you know, that's just a smiling, he's just a smile. Uh, yeah, what you deserve to, yeah, I mean, you deserve, um, to have employees that go out and champion, uh, man, your action items, it, it's just, you know, they take ownership of it, and, and it's, it's unbelievable. We did a video, and I'm, I'm a hush. We did a video, start my time, Brian. We did a video, uh, a couple, a couple days ago, and we was welcoming the community out, and, uh, man, the, the guys were just so happy, and they showed so much, uh, excitement about, about it, and it was, it was just amazing, it was amazing to see. Uh, so I do commend you guys, um, but tonight, I did hear three people. Um, but tonight, I did hear three people and I'm, I'm always gonna try to do the right thing, if, 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 every chance I get, if I do the right thing. And so I did hear three, three people, I heard Commissioner Cowan, heard, um, Commissioner Henderson. And if I'm not wrong, I think I heard Commissioner Mason as well. Um, so I will be reaching out to the county manager, uh, next week. And we will be talking about doing some testing. So, uh, we'll give you more information on that as it comes. Well, well, let me rephrase that and make sure I do that right. Our three votes will get it on the agenda. Three votes will get it on the agenda. So we'll place it on the agenda. And if it passed, we will look at doing some testing. With that said, I seek a motion, please. It's a motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Edwards, seconded by Commissioner Mason. All in favor?